I don't know. I call him the youngest surveyor in the state. He only licensed like two, three, four people in his area to be surveyed. Because of that.
Okay. Meeting of the Somerville Planning Board for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided. Copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one posted on the bulletin board outside Bore Hall, two mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier News, and three given to Kirk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call, please.
Chairman Novato?
Here.
Ms. Rosensky?
Here.
Mayor Gallagher?
Here.
Councilman Vroom?
Here.
Ms. Sider?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Kraska?
Here.
Mr. Crestes?
Here.
Mr. Cleveland?
Here.
Mr. Addicks? And Mr. Akins?
Here.
Okay, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of, um, what was it, January twenty-fourth?
Second.
Chairman Novato?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Sider?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Crestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Okay, approval of the minutes for the executive session of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved. Second.
Chairman Novato?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Sider?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yeah.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Crestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have resolution authorizing a non-fair and open contract to CHA Consulting, Inc., to serve as the two thousand and twenty-four conflict, conflict planning board engineer and planner.
Second.
Chairman Novato?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Sider?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Crestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, next we have a resolution memorializing the approval of, um, what is it? Uh, one thirty-four East Main LLC.
Mr. Chairman, the only change we need to make is the date of the completeness letter of Mr. Cole's report needs to be inserted in there. He's going to get it for me. We'll put it in, but as long as we could have a motion to second and adopt it, subject to that inclusion of that date.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Subject to inclusion of that date.
Correct.
Chairman Novato?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Sider?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Crestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have a hearing for New Jersey Elixir Company LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I think Ms. Sider would like to recuse herself from this application.
Okay.
She's been involved. I don't want to speak for you if you'd like to explain.
I'm kind of involved with the applicants as they were donating stuff to the American Legion since I'm the commander at the American Legion. I don't think.
Okay, that's fine.
I should.
Just as an out of an abundance of caution, and we have enough people here tonight, so.
Right.
But she has to leave the strawberries.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is David Singer from the law firm of Borseo, Bromberg, and Newman, and I represent the applicant tonight. We are here before the board tonight on behalf of our client seeking a minor site plan approval to enhance the property by renovating the existing restaurant into a meadery, which is consistent with allowable uses in the B-one zone. The property is located at block sixty-two, lot twenty, and is commonly known as twenty-dash-thirty East Main Street. The proposed renovations will not alter the existing footprint of the property. Property is currently vacant, and this applicant intends to create a vibrant use for the main street of Somerville. Tonight, you will hear testimony on behalf of the applicant by a member of the applicant, by our planner, engineer, and our architect, explaining the renovation and that the proposed application is fully conforming with the requirements of Somerville ordinances and the municipal land use law and should be granted. At this time, I'd like to call our first witness.
Okay, you want to swear them all in at one time?
Sure. Yep, we're going to swear everybody in just before we start. Jenna, all notices and publication proofs are in and everything is satisfactory? Okay. Yeah, if we could just get those three individuals, I'll swear them all in at the same time, and then they can present their name and qualifications. That's where the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay, and then just for housekeeping purposes, Wilmark is A-one, the application and the supporting documentation. A-two will be the proofs of notice and publication, and A-three will be Mr. Cole's letter of January thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, yes, geez. And PB-two will be the Borough of Somerville Fire Official's letter dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Yes, thank you. I got tripped up with the year. I'm still saying two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up Caleb, who is, represents New Jersey Elixir.
If you could just spell your name for the record.
First name Caleb, C-A-L-E-B, last name Alles, A-H-L-E-S.
Caleb, can you please explain to the board what your title and position is with regard to the applicant?
I'm one of the founding members of New Jersey Elixir Company, specifically handling assistance with the real estate development, land, uh, use review, and the lease negotiations. My background is specifically in real estate development, logistics, and supply chain management.
Could you explain to the board what exactly a meadery is and what your business plans are for the property?
Yeah, so a meadery is a location where we can make and sell mead. It is, uh, mead is a specifically a honey-based alcohol, fermentable alcohol, and we intend to sell mead with varieties of mixtures of yeast, different flavors. It'll come in several different strengths, such as wine or beer strength alcohols, and we intend to fabricate this on-site, host a tasting room that will allow folks to bring in their food from other restaurants within the community, and that we will also distribute to the local bars, restaurants within the local region with hopes to expand over the, over the years.
And what time do you tend to operate the meadery?
Generally, we're going to, we're going to be operating within the times of noon to midnight to be consistent with other businesses in the, in the, in the community.
And I know a question that was in Mr. Cole's report, which was marked as PB-one, was with regard to the exterior lights. When do you intend to operate those lights?
Those lights are intended to be dust till dawn. It is not something that we, as the tenant, have control over, but we will be working with the landlord to make sure that those are operating as appropriate.
Are there any questions for this witness?
No questions. Okay.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up John Manino, our architect.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day.
Same to you.
My name is John Manino. I'm owner and principal of Cermonera Architect located right on the corner of Hillsborough, New Jersey.
John, can you tell the board what your educational background is?
Yes, so I have a bachelor's degree in architecture. Graduated from Philadelphia College of Textiles and Science in two thousand and one. I've been practicing since. I've, uh, many of you may have known my old partner, Carmen Cermonera, who was a Somerville-based architect originally. Me and him were partners, and I acquired a firm from him when he retired about three and a half years ago. So I've testified in front of various boards across six states, so I'm very familiar with the, for the process.
What licenses do you currently hold?
So I'm a licensed architect, again, across six states, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York, Connecticut, Delaware, and Virginia.
I would ask the board to accept John Manino as an architect.
We will accept him.
Just going to pull up some of the, the plans. Unfortunately, the screen is a little small.
Okay, so on the screen is a digital PDF of what you have in front of you, was previously submitted as part of the application.
Karen, do you want to mark this or?
Has this been submitted with the application? Then that will be part of A-one.
Yeah, this is no change to this document. What you see before you is on, on the very top of the drawing is the current layout of the vacant Indian restaurant, and below is the proposed interior modifications of the applicant is proposing for the meadery. As Caleb has alluded to earlier, the, this is a primarily an interior rehabilitation project. It's going to involve really a complete demolition and reconstruction of the inside except for some, the existing bathrooms and main existing service utilities. It would be all new finishes, new ceiling, an elaborate seating area, a serving bar, as well as the production facilities necessary to produce the mead in the back of the area that previously was occupied by a full-service kitchen. Seating arrangements that you see there help for hierarchy seating, some lounge seating, some bar seating, as well as some other, you know, more communal type of seating arrangements. The applicant, though primarily interior renovation work is proposed, there are some exterior renovations being considered, of course, primarily the front facade facing Main Street. Currently, it is presented per the Indian Restaurant's color scheme and branding. The applicant is proposing to upgrade the facade with a new color scheme, new signage, all to be in compliant with, with the ordinance.
I want to draw your attention to what's been marked as PB-one, the, uh, report from Michael Cole dated January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. To the extent you haven't addressed it in your opening, if you can address Mr. Cole's comments specifically in section four of his, uh, report.
Yes, I would like to enter an exhibit to assist in addressing some of the comments that were posed in Michael Cole's, uh, letter.
Okay, so it'll mark that as A-three?
Four. I think it's A-four.
It's A-three.
A-three? Okay.
Yeah, I mistakenly marked Mike's report as A-three instead of PB-one. So A-three, just give us a title, who prepared it, and date.
Okay, so the date on this document is February fourteenth, two thousand and four. It is noted as exhibit, and it was prepared by our office. Before you is really similar, same floor plans that you received as part of the application, as well as the same exterior elevations. What we did in an effort is we increased the size of the images of the elevation along with printing it in color because the application was made in black and white, just so we have a better visual of what currently exists, from the Indian Restaurant's image to what is currently being proposed by the applicant for the facade modifications. We can touch on individual comments or?
Let's talk about, I know, Mr. Cole, that in section four A, you talked about parking and circulation. So to the extent, so the building facade along the alleyway, it's a painted, not painted masonry, and a consideration should be given to painting the facade.
Again, so I'll touch on, I'll elaborate on that comment a bit, just touch on the generalities of the exterior renovations proposed. In respect to the comment number two, along the alleyway, currently, there are six blocked-up windows that were blocked up over the years. The applicant is proposing to reopen and reuse four of those locations to, to help with get some natural diffused daylight into the space. We will be reusing the existing openings, existing structural dentals, so we wouldn't be creating new openings, per se. With respect to the doors that access the alleyway, we will be replacing those doors with new doors and new hardware in order to continue use of those doors as egress doors, which are, were previously being utilized as egress doors as part of the Indian Restaurant.
Turn your attention to four D, the building elevations and facade, and specifically, if you could provide testimony related to A-two, as requested by Mr. Cole.
Yes, and, and I will touch on the, the front facade, which is item one under section D as well, since we have a before and after representation on the screen. So again, the existing elevation left over from the Indian Restaurant consists of a creamy yellow color painted wall with a burgundy accent, and there are some wood articulated treatments both over the storefront entry as well as at the cornice of, of the building. The applicant's intent is to remove all of the branding that is left over from the Indian Restaurant, which would include all the woodwork, the projecting wood canopy over the door, and, and the cornice, and repaint the facade primarily in a, in a soft white color, which would be consistent with what we see with the adjacent building facade, which we know as Kaima. And then we would incorporate a gray, a soft gray accent in replace of the burgundy to help utilize a backdrop for their new Elixir sign that would be proposed over the door. In addition to that, we, we're also proposing a fabric-style awning over the entrance storefront. And again, the, the height and location and size would be consistent with the ordinance. As far as the number two, you know, I think that touches on most of, of those comments except for the rooftop equipment that's lumped into that comment. The space currently is fed by three rooftop units. In this exhibit, I'll try to highlight here, in this exhibit, we highlighted where those locations are. This rectangular box here, this rectangular box, and this rectangular box back here are the three primary rooftop units that feed this facility. It is our intent to, if possible, to reuse the equipment if they're in condition to do so. Otherwise, if replacement's required, we will be replacing in the same location as they currently exist, so we can utilize existing curb openings, et cetera. We don't anticipate any rooftop screening since the existing units are not visible, and we don't anticipate the, any newer units changing that condition.
The, I want to turn your attention to section four F regarding the signage, and explain the testimony with regard to the size.
Yes, yes, so what had been submitted as part of the application was a sign that was being proposed at three feet high by eight foot wide. However, in conversations with the applicant, the applicant has agreed to amend the signage size to ensure that it will not be any taller than two feet in height and no more than eight feet in width. The proportions would probably make the sign a little bit smaller in width, but we are proposing today a sign no larger than two foot high by eight foot wide to ensure compliance. The sign itself, you know, a, a full signage package will be prepared by the applicant and their signage vendor to provide all the information necessary, material, mounting, illumination, and illumination levels. The intent is to maintain a consistent illumination with the adjacent properties as far as intensity is concerned, and currently, they are proposed as in being internally illuminated.
And with regard to section four G, the rooftop mechanical equipment, you'll revise the, the plans to, to show the rooftop equipment, correct?
Yes, we'll include the locations of where the existing rooftop units are located, which are also the anticipated locations of any new equipment or replacement, and certainly any new equipment would, would meet the noise regulations that are necessary per the, per the code and ordinance.
Okay.
Next, I want to turn your attention to what has been marked as PB-two, the, um, report of the fire marshal dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. To the extent you didn't address egress in your prior testimony, can you please address the comments in the fire marshal's letter?
Yes, and, and I'll start by just highlighting on the plan for everyone where the egress doors currently are. Obviously, we have the main front doors that face the main street, the sidewalk, that acts as an ingress and egress. We have these two doors. There's one man door here, another man door here. Both are signed as exit doors that go on to a common alleyway driveway adjacent to the property. And then there's two other exit doors right now. There's this rear door, as well as there's a shared access with the adjacent restaurant currently that can also and was utilized as an exit door as well. Our proposal, and our proposal plan is to utilize all of the existing exit doors in their same location except for one. We would be abandoning the shared access with the adjacent restaurant mainly for security purposes and just ease of management between the two businesses and so on. There's no need to share that, that access point. That will keep us with four egress points for our space. With respect to the Fire, Fire Prevention Bureau's comments, much of which really pertain to compliance with building and fire codes, which we will address as part of the interior fit-up work. So with respect to compliance, the, the interior fit-up work will comply with all applicable building and fire egress codes as necessary per, per the New Jersey Uniform Construction Code and the latest codes that are adopted within that. I understand that there is a concern on his part with respect to the two doors that access the alleyway. Again, those are two existing doors that are currently signed as exit doors and have been. Should a need arise, we are able to accommodate egress even with just the front and rear doors from an egress standpoint and still comply with building code. So again, that'll be something that'll be addressed as part of our application for, for building permits.
And the, the, the two side doors empty onto the alley?
Correct.
The rear door is, does that empty onto a loading dock?
Yeah, it's a raised, it's a shared raised platform. I, I wouldn't really say it's a loading dock, per se. I mean, it really acts as a service platform for, for the two, for the two tenants. There, there is no way for, for a vehicle really to back up to it. I mean, there's parking spaces in front of it, and there's, there's columns that support the sheds, so it's not really a loading dock, but, uh, but it is a, an elevated platform.
Okay. Thanks, any questions?
Yeah, those doors, that platform can act as a safety. It's for fire exit only. It's not for customers coming in and out.
That's just, it would be, it's for exit. It's for egress.
Just for fire exit.
Yeah, and it, it acts as a service access for the tenant, of course.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, customers would not be permitted to enter from the rear of the building. All access for customers from an ingress standpoint would be from the main street, just like all other tenants.
So the alleyway is also just a safety issue?
Correct.
So if there's something going on, yeah, you're going to be trespassing, but it's for the safety of the people in the building.
To be able to exit out.
Exit.
Correct.
Thank you.
Macalavy. We're in the process of reviewing title to see if there is, a lot of the documents are fairly old and, and not easy to read in terms of whether there was a prior agreement historically, but it is something we're looking into. We believe it has been used as egress in the past, that there is likely some sort of an agreement in place historically.
Okay.
Any other questions for this witness?
I just, can you adjust refuse and handling of recyclables and garbage?
I believe our planner will address that, but currently, all the, all the refuse and dumpsters are existing, where they currently exist. Each tenant, in this case, the meadery and Kaima, have access to individual enclosures. The meadery, from my, my, best of my knowledge, and again, the planner can attest to this, they have an enclosed area in the back where their refuse goes. What you see as open and uncontrolled, let's say, is really the adjacent, adjacent tenants.
Regarding the sign, the LED, the internal lit sign, I understand it's a custom sign. I just request that it can be dimmable so that this, that the brightness can be adjusted.
Yeah, I, I believe the applicant is, is certainly more than, more than willing to make sure that that's accommodated.
Okay. Okay. Are you going to address the drainage?
I'm going to have our, our planner and engineer to, um, address the, the remaining comments in the report.
Okay, so the rest of the items in Mike Cole's report, he'll address?
Will be addressed by our, our planner and engineer.
Thanks.
At this time, I'd like to call up our planner and engineer, Joe Vince. Mr. Vince, can you please tell the board your educational background?
Sure, I have a bachelor's science degree from Fairleigh Dickinson University in civil engineering technology. I also have a bachelor's science degree from NJIT Land Surveying.
Can you tell the board what licenses you currently hold?
I'm a licensed engineer, land surveyor, and planner.
And how many boards have you appeared before?
A lot. I appeared before the zoning board in this town, I've been to Bridgewater, other surrounding towns, and I also represent several other municipalities as the, the borough engineer, the planning board, zoning board engineer, and building department engineer.
I would ask that the board accept Joe Vince as our planning and engineering manager.
We find him acceptable.
Mr. Vince, I want to go back to what's been marked as PB-one, the letter from Michael Cole dated January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and I want to draw your attention to item four B, the stormwater drain. And I want to draw your attention to item four B, the stormwater drain.
I did inspect the site, I didn't see external, any external roof leaders, which I would also agree that they're internal roof drains. The project's not gonna have any change in stormwater management, there's really no change at all proposed to the building or the footprint or any other site improvements. And if we need to provide a dye test, we can certainly agree to do that.
I want to turn your attention to the next item in the report, item C, site lighting.
Yes. So currently, the, there isn't much site lighting, right on the side in the alley. Currently, the alley is pretty bright, a lot of the lights are coming off of the neighboring building. There are two or three fixtures on our building, but they weren't currently operational. I believe the applicant is in discussions with the landlord to try to get those lights fixed. There's also a spotlight type light on the, at the rear on the loading dock. When I say spotlight, it's more of a residential type fixture with just two bulbs. And that's not operational at this point in time, but the intent is to just fix it in kind. But it's really not a substantial light, it's just gonna light up the area, typical of a residential type fixture.
Turn your attention then to the extent, you know, the question was raised regarding solid waste management.
Yeah, so the proposed use really doesn't generate a lot of trash, I was talking to the applicant about it. A lot of the containers and things that they get for the products, they get sent back to where the products are coming from and they get refilled and reused. We really, there's gonna be minimal trash, there may be some cardboard boxes and things. But the amount of trash is gonna be less than what the Indian restaurant generated and probably the restaurant next door. All the trash is gonna be kept in the dumpster area, that's gonna be provided by the landlord. I was told that the dumpsters that are getting assigned to the tenant are the ones in the, in an existing enclosure. And then as far as the recycling, I believe the county does it with containers that they provide. The tenant right now is not aware of any containers that are on the site, but they'll talk to the landlord, the county about that. And they're gonna use that if possible, if not, they're gonna just have to put it in the dumpster and deal with a private waller.
Thank you. In four H, Mr. Cole discusses the sanitary sewer. Can you provide testimony regarding whether there's gonna be any flow increases?
We don't anticipate any increase in flows. And, oh, that was the one with the dye test, and if we have to dye test the sewer, we'll comply, whatever Mr. Cole would like.
Now I want to draw your attention to the summary of variances and waivers that were Mr. Cole's report. I want to recap that. According to Mr. Dino, we will be complying with section one oh two dash one twenty G. And Dino also testified that we'll be complying with section one oh two dash one nineteen F. I'd like you to address the comment regarding section one oh two dash one seventeen E, which is regarding the odor or noise.
Oh, there's no expected odors, it's a relatively clean process and odor free from what I've been told about it. And there'll be no odors that would create a nuisance to any of the other surrounding properties.
No exhaust fans?
No, there's no exhaust or any sort of beams that are associated with the use.
Yeah, it would likely actually be less than what was existing there because there isn't a full working kitchen.
Right.
And with regard to the waiver, do you believe a waiver is necessary for the dumpster?
No, I don't see any other practical means of disposing the waste.
And it's pre-existing, correct?
Correct, there's no changes at all proposed to the site.
Okay, and how much waste are you gonna generate? I mean, you're talking about cardboard boxes and that kind of stuff, but does the production itself generate waste?
No.
Are you serving food with sister at all? So you will have people eating food out of takeout containers, so you'll have that waste also.
Right. It's gonna function similar to a brewery, where you could bring your food in and consume it and there'll be a tasting room.
Which leads me to a question about the water usage. So you have all these vats that you're brewing in, I assume occasionally you clean them out. So that's a large volume of water that's going to be going through the sewer system, yes?
Are there any questions for Mr. Vince?
Going back to, I get the take in food, somebody comes with a party of ten and they want to bring food in, they want to order it or get it from the food truck. Are you gonna have the capacity for your garbage to handle that?
Yes, because there's dumpsters already associated with the space that was gonna, that was for a restaurant use. So the amount of garbage that would be generated is gonna be substantially less than the restaurant.
What, you still have the capacity to take care of it?
Yes. Yes.
And if, and if it gets to be too much, will you go to?
If there would have to be accommodations made with the landlord, certainly the intent is not to have overflowing garbage on the site.
Right.
And, you know, that'd be a code violation, but that's certainly not the intent.
A typical condition is that the frequency of a pickup will be increased if it's a public health issue.
Right.
It's just a typical comment, very typical.
That's where I was going to.
Right.
Right, yeah, they'd have to come pick it up more frequent or get a larger container or it would have to be accommodations made, but.
I can imagine a hundred or ninety-nine seats, if everybody brought some pan, you were packed.
Right.
That could be a lot of garbage.
Can I just ask, I think I'm going back to the owner, so the canning assembly line, are you canning stuff that's going into the restaurant? Are you canning stuff that's going to be sold outside of the building? So where are you storing the stuff that's going to be sold outside of it? Like, I don't see a storage room except for the cooler. You have, say that one more time, you have storage within this plant?
Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Yeah, that would be better.
For you guys to hear?
Come on up to the microphone and then everybody who's watching it on TV can hear you.
So the storage for the camp stuff that's going to be leaving the restaurant or the brewery or the meterie?
Yeah, so we have space about nineteen pallets worth on the inside of the space, it just wasn't marked out on the plan.
Can you show that on the plan, can the architect show that on the plan? Is that the staging area?
It's a staging area, correct.
Sorry, yeah, the staging area. By that back door.
By the fire exit?
Yeah, so in the staging area, that's throughout here, we're not, we're purposely leaving access that'll allow folks to travel and our, not our customers, but our employees who need to go back of house for whatever reason. We'll be able to go, access and then egress the property from the back. And then we have space through here where we're gonna be able to store pallets of goods that will be for distribution.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have one on the sewer flows, I agree with you, I don't think they're being increased, but if you can get a correspondence from SRDSA stating that. We had the situation with Village Public Brewery that, I got an email after the fact because it was changed from a commercial to a restaurant and the approval was prior to this, the code change. But it got into a tick and tack on whether a connection fee was required.
Yeah, our process is much less intensive than a standard brewing. We're literally dumping honey and water into a tank, letting it sit, pumping it out, putting it into some kegs and serving it up. And, you know, none of the water is going to waste with the exception of the occasional rinsing that we have to do to clean the interior. There's a lot less heating up, going down, rewashing and going through the whole process that beer does take to make. It's much simpler with meat.
Well, I agree with you, I'm just saying, having that, should the board approve this, some paperwork from SRDSA?
Yeah.
So that they're on the same page as they're all of us.
So we will.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Do you have any more testimonies to present?
I just want to finish up in terms of the general comments, the extent that we haven't addressed yet. In terms of the tidiness of the loading dock, I think it was, testimony was provided that that is a shared between tenants. The extent that we draw our app, that we, here, that, that. The, with regard to outside approvals, we already have approvals on the Senate, some of the planning board for this project. The state and federal licensing are in process, they take some time to go through the arduous rocks up in the state. But they are, they just submitted and that's where we are with the outside approvals. If there are no further questions, respectfully submit this minor site plan to be approved for the reasons testified to by our experts.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public for comments and questions. Anybody hearing none, we will close the public session. And we will be voting on preliminary approval, correct?
What have you, do you apply for both preliminary and final?
You apply to both preliminary and final.
Okay, is the board seeing need to separate the two?
Okay.
Okay, so what we're looking for would be preliminary and final, this is classified as a minor?
Yeah, change in use minor.
Change in use, minor site plan approval. All of the variances have been explained away by the applicant, they are not necessary, no variances or waivers. I do have some conditions, but one of the things that I did hear that the board may want to weigh in on, one of the things that the applicant does not want to comply with in Mr. Cole's report is the screening of the rooftop equipment. So I don't know if you want to address that and discuss whether or not you feel that's necessary or not. Otherwise, I can just say the applicant's willing to comply with all the conditions in Mike's report.
If they replace some and it's different sizes and they're visible from the street, then it should be. But if they're not visible from the street, then I see no reason.
That was a testimony I heard that they're not in public view currently.
I pulled up the street view from, and you can't see them now, but if they do have to be replaced and you put in larger ones, they should be screened then.
That's generally what we've done, if it's not in public view, why screen it then?
Yeah.
So the applicant is going to keep the locations, or if they change, but they're still not in public view, if the board's comfortable with that.
But if they are, then they will screen it.
But if they are, then what we typically do is some lattice, we're not talking something.
Yes.
Honorous, just something to dress it up so that.
Yeah, we'll replace the RTUs in kind if allowable and if they are larger and you can't see it from the street, we'll screen it up. But we're not putting, you know, chillers up there, so.
Okay, so the approval would be site plan approval. The conditions I have would be compliance with all conditions in Mr. Cole's report marked as PB one, as well as the conditions in the report of the fire official marked as PB two. The hours of operation, twelve AM to twelve PM. Signage will be compliant, specifically two feet by eight feet. The frequency of pickups or the size of the trash container will be enhanced if and as necessary so as not to create a public health hazard. The only condition that would be altered in Mike's report would be that screening of the rooftop equipment would only be required if the equipment was replaced and visible from the street. I would suggest that the board ask for a copy if you're able to locate it based on the title work of any agreement for that rear egress easement or access or whatever the case may be, just so we have one for the file. The plans, if I got this correct, shall be amended to show that that staging area is what will be used for storage. That's the intention, just so again, that's clear. The applicant will do its best to tidy up its portion of the rear loading dock area. And can you help me with the sewer connection fee condition, how do we want to word that?
Just documentation that if there's no fee, it comes from the authority, if there is a fee, that they show proof of paying the fee. But I am uncomfortable that a restaurant of this would be typically done by seats, not by the actual process. And I think the seats are very similar, so I don't see a connection fee. However, the authority wants to make that determination.
Okay, so documentation that either there is no fee or if there is a fee, what that is and proof of payment.
Right.
Real quick, can you just clarify the hours?
Noon to midnight.
And then, because I thought I saw in the report that it was gonna be open until two AM.
That's what the state allows, but we're gonna be more consistent with what is done in the current community.
Okay.
So it was the conditions and that's the relief that's necessary?
I will move it on all those conditions.
Okay.
Okay.
Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Inver?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Craster?
Yes.
Mr. Crestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
And just a quick thank you, if I may, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you for investing in our community. It's a very unique thing that you're doing. I think it complements the brewery we have and obviously all the restaurants we have. And look forward to trying out some meat, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna keep my comments fairly brief. We've got a request from the Borough Council to look into zoning as it relates to firearms retail stores. And it's my understanding from our attorney that that's, we're subject to at least one lawsuit. And as a result, I don't think we should discuss that change right now until the lawsuits are settled. But anything we do now isn't going to affect the current situation at all because it's, it was a permitted use when they got their permits. And so, nothing we do right now is gonna change anything. The other thing that I wanted to address is we got, and I just got it today, the sample ordinance opposing the Fair Housing Act. And I think, I think. I think we need to discuss that at this board. I know that the Borough Council's going to discuss it, but I'm sure they're going to ask for our input, and so, I'd like.
Did we get a copy of it too, or just you?
I think we all got it, but.
Yeah, I think it was distributed. It's a draft resolution that has been proposed by Jeff Serenian for the municipalities and/or the boards, or really anybody that wants to weigh in on this, to just express their displeasure with, with the bill.
Latest.
Yep.
Okay, but I think we need to get a little more input before we even discuss it. Okay, that concludes my comments. I will now open the meeting up to the public.
Okay, so if there's anyone that wants to speak, if you just can just come up to the microphone, give your name and your address, and floor is yours.
Caroline Flemos, 37 West Springs Street. While I do appreciate your remarks addressing the situation with the proposed gun shop, I do have a few different things I'd like to share with the board pertaining to the future, and I do think that we can still look ahead to the future, even if it doesn't affect this specific shop, because the reality is there's nothing that says another one wouldn't open right within the same zoning area. So I think we can try to look to the future, as many people, including the mayor, actually at a previous meeting, have expressed that this is probably not the most ideal location. All right, I was a little surprised to hear a couple of meetings ago during a town council meeting, that the board has not convened in 20-plus years to review the zones overall in our town. That was a little shocking. I've been a resident here for over 12 years, and that upsets me greatly to hear. The second thing I'd like to do is share some suggestions, but I also want to share some facts about communities who have gun shops in them. And I actually sent these facts to all of you, I sent them to Jenna, who's going to pass it along, along with citations, just in case you want to know where my sources are from. There are roughly five incidents per day where firearms go missing from gun dealers through robbery, burglary, larceny, or other loss. Too often these guns are diverted to the illegal market. States with the most gun dealers per capita have 10 times higher rates of guns trafficked to another state, and subsequently used in a crime that states with the fewest gun dealers, then states with the fewest gun dealers per capita. The large number of gun dealers near schools is a concern because of the crime that they attract. In 2021, there were nearly 900 thefts or robberies from gun shops at a rate of over two per day. Gun violence can depreciate the home, the value of a home up to 4%. While this doesn't sound like a lot, if it were a $500,000 home, that would be a depreciation of $20,000. Another quote, "Our results indicate that homicide rates increase in the years following an increase in gun density. Additionally, gun density itself has no significant relationship with homicides not involving a gun. Now that we've seen how allowing a gun shop into our small community, especially in a mixed commercial and residential areas with schools, dance studios, a church, and other small businesses could seriously impact things, let's discuss other ways in which this is completely wrong." New Jersey law S1368 states that towns are supposed to collect certificates of insurance from landlords and businesses on an annual basis, and be sure that they keep a record of these certificates. Additionally, they are supposed to show that there is 500,000 general liability coverage, low in my opinion, I used to work in the insurance industry and write these types of policies. This is to protect your citizens in case they are injured in or around these businesses. If they are a landlord, and they have 500,000 in general liability, and they have three or four stores, and somebody slips and falls in another one, the first thing when there's a lawsuit related to that slip and fall is for the insurance company to see if the nature of business in every single spot that the landlord opens has been disclosed. If it hasn't, the policy is voided, and now that citizen who broke their neck has no protection, then they're going to sue the town. Okay, it is also to indemnify the town from lawsuit, as the town will have done its due diligence in protecting its citizens. Town ordinance for this section says windows signs are permitted in the B1, B2, B3, B4, B5, and B6 zone, district as an accessory structure to non-residential uses subject to the following requirements. The intent of these requirements is to regulate signs located inside a building that could reasonably be construed as serving the same or equivalent function to signs outside the building. A, window signs, both permanent and temporary in aggregate, shall not cover more than 30% of the total area of the various display windows. I don't know if you've been by this shop, 100% of the windows are covered. Why? Because federal law, and I believe state law, requires them to cover the shop windows. But if that's the case, and it's in conflict with our local zoning, such a shop never should have been approved for this zone. However, state law, oh, I'll skip that one, our zoning code also states any building, structure, or use which would create an undue hazard of fire, explosion, or nuisance by reason of odor, noise, dust, or smoke, or which in any way would be detrimental to the health, safety, and public morals of the community, can be excluded. I think we're all saying that this could be a potential safety risk, especially if we're seeing that crime and burglary goes up in areas where there are gun shops. Based on these laws and ordinances, along with scientific research, I make the following requests of the board. Please adhere to New Jersey law 1368. This is as much to protect the town as it is the residents. I also suggest the following, and you can take it or leave it. For me, I never wrote a business, especially a landlord, but any business, with less than a million in liability. We're in a very litigious state, it's not wise, in my opinion, if you're going to be a business with foot traffic to have less than a mil, but that's up to them. Secondly, landlords should furnish a COI, but should be required to list the nature of the business taking place on the premises, including a full list of all stores and what goods or services are sold at said location. This is to be sure that the insurer is aware of the risk they are insuring. In the case of 131 North Gaston Avenue, if the insurer is unaware that a gun shop is on the premises, and a person slips and falls at the adjacent pizzeria or hair salon, when the insurance company conducts their investigation and learns of unauthorized business taking place on premises, they would only be liable to return premiums. It would void the policy. Please consider some new categorization, and consider sending some businesses immediately to the zoning board of adjustment. This should include businesses which deal in hazardous materials or carrying items manufactured with the intent to be used as weapons. If hazardous materials or items manufactured with the intention to be used as weapons fall in a zone that abuts residential properties, schools, parks, or other places young children may be found, I strongly suggest prohibiting such business from taking place in these zones. Please establish a true gun-free school zone by prohibiting the sale of items manufactured with the intent of usage as weapons, within 1,000 feet as the crow flies, from the property line of any public or private school, nursery school, daycare, park, children's fitness or dance studio, or residential area. When an inspector is sent out to a property which has been granted a permit, please be sure they are up to code with all zoning regulations within the town. This would include if state regulations prevent them from being compliant with town ordinance. In that case, you should not have been permitted for that zone. Please confirm with applicants that they have a valid lease at the address listed on the application, and that all federal and state permits are within compliance before a permit is issued. I would love to see if we could have an independent study on how much this could reduce the property value of homes in the area, bearing in mind that this is the only public elementary school in our town. We are not Bridgewater. We don't have a whole ton of schools. I used to teach in Edison Township. We had 11 elementary schools. If a parent was very angry about something that happened in the neighborhood, they could simply go to the Board of Ed and ask for their child to be sent to a different school, and sometimes they would do that. We have no choice. We are being held hostage. In the last council meeting, at 41 minutes and 22 seconds, the mayor did say that tonight, the, the planning board would vote to make a recommendation to review zoning, and that it won't affect the store that's currently going in. So yes, we understand that it won't affect this store, but we were told that at tonight's meeting, there would be a discussion and vote. We also know that we can't zone things completely out of our community, but exclusionary zoning, which was referred to in the last meeting, is actually part of a completely different issue that happened way back in the 70s, and is related to residential and not commercial. So it doesn't actually have anything to do with this. At the end of the day, it's our government's responsibility to protect itself and its citizens. Please consider everything that I just mentioned as you make your recommendations.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public session.
First of all, I want to say, sorry, Maria Rankin, I live at 67 Lisa Terrace in Somerville. Thank you for all of what you do. I appreciate that we have the opportunity to speak here tonight, and the opportunity for public comment. And with that said, I'll keep my comments brief, but I just want to say that I strongly, strongly support banning gun sales within at least 1,000 feet of all schools, childcare facilities, and children's recreational areas. And I do hope that you consider that in all future zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Cisco, 37 Eastern Avenue. I was previously a member of the flood zone committee. Right, exactly. And during that, those times, the term exclusionary zoning came up quite often. And as it was just mentioned previously, what I've heard is that it's a residential housing-type exclusion. And then during the last few council meetings, we've heard it again, but again for commercial. So I do not know what the rule is, and I was wondering if somebody can clarify, what does exclusionary zoning mean, and does it apply to commercial?
So exclusionary zoning in its purest form means exactly that, that you're excluding any particular use from a particular zone. It has been come to be more associated with affordable housing and residential types of zoning, but in, like I said, it's, it's purest form, it typically just means to exclude any sort of use from a particular zone, or any area within the municipality.
Is that, is this information, is this available anywhere to read or to find, or like, where, where can we find this information so we can, where does it say it? Like, what does it say to find exclusionary zoning?
So I guess maybe I could help you a little more if I could understand the reason for the question.
I'm just trying to find out or understand if in the future, this board can exclude gun stores from our, from our town.
Well, and what I can tell you is one of the things that the borough and the board will be doing is looking into all of those issues from every angle, not only in light of the litigation, but in light of case law and everything else, to make sure that anything that it does will be sustained and is proper from a legal perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Maisy Walsh. I live at 17 West Cliff Street. Again, also thank you, and thanks to everyone who came up and spoke before me. I actually wasn't planning to speak tonight. I just had a couple of questions based on some of the things that we heard. I am here, you know, with these lovely people, most of them over here, about the gun shop as well. And my questions are really, this is my first planning board meeting, and so I just had some questions, because we listened to this meatery presentation, and it was very detailed, and it was about, you know, signage, and it was about how they plan to get deliveries, and, you know, hazard, public hazards, and I wanted to know if the gun shop went through that process as well, and if, if not, why not?
I can explain that.
Yeah.
Didn't, because it's a permitted use, it wasn't a change of use. This meatery is a change of use from a restaurant to brewing.
Okay.
And that's why they had to appear before the board. Retail to retail typically doesn't require an appearance before any board, if it's a permitted use. And this was, so it didn't, didn't require going to a board. Just like a clothing store going to some other kind of hard goods, doesn't, you know, downtown, they, they change standards all the time, and they don't have to go to a board. We require applicants who are changing the use to come to the board. We require new restaurants, and particularly food, food establishments, to come to the board.
Okay.
And applicants, if a site plan is required for an application, they have the right to file an application for, to waive that site plan appearance. If, if any change they're making to the exterior of the building is minor in nature, they can come and, and request a waiver.
Right, so the doors and stuff like that that he was talking about.
And, and, but typically, if there's a retail establishment, and, and another one moves in, doesn't go to any board.
So change of use just doesn't apply to retail?
No.
Not if you're going retail to retail, or sporting goods to sporting goods, which I think that's what it fell.
Is, is a gun shop considered sporting goods?
Yeah, that was, that was the catch.
That was the catch.
That was what people did not expect.
Okay, so is this area that's around, you know, the school, obviously, is this area zoned as any retail business can be there? Would a liquor store have to apply, or, or something?
There, there are certain SIC, or I think now it's called NAICS codes, that are permitted within the particular zones. They're all outlined in our ordinance and the attachments to the ordinance. This particular one fell under the sporting goods, which is permitted in the SIC codes that are allowed there. So that's all in our ordinance, you can take a, a look at that, but it's hard to answer that question, because there's so many different ones in different zones.
Right. Okay, so Somerville, we just don't have anything that says that, you know, that there are certain types of business that are either more or less allowed or accepted in certain areas?
If you take a look at the ordinance and those NAICS and SIC codes within the particular zones, that will show you what they are and aren't. So whatever's listed there is allowed.
Okay.
If you look at Schedule A.
Schedule A, okay.
Schedule A, the land use ordinance, chapter 102.
Okay.
It'll give each zone, will be Ps for things that are permissible, Cs for conditional use.
Okay.
Look at the conditions, and then if it's not listed, it's prohibited.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maquil Mullenberg, 31 Eastern Avenue. And thanks again for being here, listening to us. So I'll kind of build on what my fellow citizens here are talking about. One main question, you said, nothing's going to change what happened. So one major, main question I have now is, how long does it take to review this, this example of permitted use of, say, sporting goods within 1,000 feet of the school? Obviously, you know, many of us are upset it even happened, it was approved. So how, how long would it take for a change to actually happen at the zoning or the planning level, so that we could review this in the future? It wouldn't just be approved because it's within the retail license, it's allowed?
It's going to depend a lot on when we can discuss it. You know, as I said earlier, it's subject of a lawsuit right now, and on advice of council, we're not going to talk about it until the lawsuit's settled, one way or another.
Okay, well, with all due respect to the council here, or to the, the planning board, I think the lack of having spoken about this in the past, and I myself plan to be at every council meeting I can, every planning board meeting, every zoning meeting, we're, we're relevant, because I think this crept up on us, and I think it's, it's just not right, and it's my opinion, but I'm incredibly upset, and so are many of the people in the town. So I'd like to see, while there's a pending lawsuit, I'd like to see action, or at least advise us as citizens, what can we do, what questions can we answer, what petitions can we file if necessary, how can we make sure we're being heard, so that a month from now, there is an exact same kind of permit, because if somebody applies today, I understand they're allowed to open a business just like this, correct? Anywhere in Somerville. It's my understanding, as long as within zoning and permitted rights, correct?
Say that again, as long as what?
So another business like this, another.
Well, I will say that, that traditionally, there have been sporting goods stores in Somerville. And, and growing up, there was one on Main Street.
Okay. Well, before my, my time as a resident here, my problem is the proximity of it to the school, where kids walk by every day. It's a place that my kids want to go to. My main concern is that the, it's the wrong location, again, it's my opinion, but I'm incredibly upset that that's where it is. I don't care if it was somewhere else, maybe more discreet, but we should be thinking about that in terms of value to the town. Does it actually provide value? I'm, I'm all for small businesses, it's great, but let's think about where we put these businesses, okay? So that's all I have to say.
We will consider everything we need to consider.
I hope so. Thank you.
Chairman, if I can weigh in for a moment?
Yeah. Yeah, just in response, the, the council referred the action of reviewing zoning here to the planning board. The, the planning board would accept, they, they're obviously, they, they received that communication tonight. The board received that communication tonight from the Borough Council. The board, as a single issue taking that up, would probably begin that discussion at the next meeting, but in light of lawsuits being filed, we don't have a choice. Once again, the, under advice of council, it begins to create a, an issue if we begin to discuss the zoning as it relates to the applicant, I shouldn't say the applicant, the store that's going in. So now we are precluded from speaking about that until such time that those suits are resolved, one way or another, however they're resolved. Once they're resolved, I'll tell you, do you have a, a planning board here who's extremely thorough? If I can speak for all of you, they're extremely thorough, extremely diverse in their thinking, and they're going to come up with a solution that is best for town, for everybody. What that is, I don't know, but I can tell you, they're a very thorough group, they are very passionate about what they feel and what they think, and when they do begin speaking about it, we want you here. We actually want the public here. This is, this is the forum for voicing what you think should be allowed in a zone or not in a zone. You know, you mentioned a liquor store before. We have a liquor store in the zone. It's actually closer to the school. We have a, a smoke shop, which is, is closer to the, the school. We have a pot store going up on Route 22. You know, I, I look at some of these things, and I shake my head, and, and I look at them, and I also say, well, where was the public outcry when those were coming in as well? The exclusionary zoning issue, you know, the, the idea of trying to be technical in terms of saying that is not it, well, the reality is, when you exclude something completely from a town, to me, the layperson, I'm not an attorney, that's, that's exclusionary. You're excluding something from a town. And history has shown, and I think council will bear me out on this, that if you exclude something completely from a zone, chances are, if you're challenged on it, you're going to lose that. And then they have the ability to go in wherever they want. We have created zones in the past for, I believe it's adult bookstores, and for marijuana shops, which are on the fringes of town. We tried to push them out as far as we could, so that they wouldn't be in the core of town. We thought it, as a body, both as a planning board body and as a council, that those zoning laws made sense. So I think everybody up here understands what you're saying, and I think you're going to have a very thorough and passionate discussion about where this should be located and where it should not be located. Given that, again, we are in a holding pattern until these, these lawsuits are resolved, and-
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So that mattered, we are in a holding pattern, but we had already planned on looking at the zoning throughout town.
That's correct.
And that's, we're not stopped from doing that, so-
Right. That, that is correct.
We can still proceed with, and I think we have rezoned in the past 20 years, parts of our things.
Yeah, we have, and I didn't say 20 years. I think it was 10.
So, anyway, we, it's on our agenda for this year to look at the whole master plan, look at the rezoning, and take a look at how the town has grown, what's good for it, what's bad, what we need to change. And that is where we can discuss in general, things like this. We just can't specifically discuss this one incident. So we're not stopping completely, looking at the town as a whole. We just have to not do this particular portion of it.
So, just, so I can clarify, so that means we can't talk about this, I guess, store?
Yeah.
But we can talk about just in general, like-
Yeah, we're going to take a look at the whole town, the residential, the business areas, the, the PORs, which are professional and residential, because that's changing quite a bit in the town. So our due diligence is to look at the town and see what's changing and what we need to change with it. So in general, we're going to be doing that all this year. That's our goal. So the more participation we get, the better.
Is that a one-year process, six-month process?
I didn't hear that.
Oh, it's a year. It's a year.
It's a year. And, yeah, it's a year. And basically, the process we've done before, we've broken down, taken a look at different sections. Some of us form committees to look at specific things, and we come back together to take a look at the big picture. Our, our planners advise us along the way. We look at other tow, towns and how they've handled things. So it's a, it's a information gathering and then an application over the town, with hopefully a lot of input from the residents of the town.
Yeah, about 10 years ago, the residential zones were looked at for decks and detached garages to try to make it easier to get permits, but that was an en-ho, en-ho committee that was formed, that took the recommendations back to the planning board. So the board has done subcommittees to look at specific issues, and then make recommendations to the general board.
So don't give up hope. We're not sitting here waiting on everything. We just, we can't do that one particular thing until the lawsuit's settled.
Okay. Close the pub, yes, one more?
Hi. My name is Ellen Parker. I'm at 12 Putnam Street, Somerville. I, I thank you for being on the planning board, and I'm speaking because you're my neighbors, you're my community. My children went to school with your children. I volunteer with, with your families. We have been talking about facts. There is a fact, in 2021, the U.S. CDC said that over 48,000 people died from gun-related deaths. I am not dis, I know that not all guns kill, but it's a fact that they do. It is a sporting product. I understand that. But we don't want, I would just implore you to look at these proposals that these people have said, the facts that they have said, to protect our community. We do not want anyone to, well, any, any of our children, any of our families, any of our grandparents, any of our neighbors to be hurt by this, or even, how would we feel if a gun bought in Somerville, you know, was used to violent, in, in gun violence to someone within or without of our community? So just please take the time to consider the rezoning, the facts that have been proposed, and know that, you know, we are very earnest in wanting to keep Somerville safe. We've come together during countless hurricanes and other disasters. We need to come together to protect our community in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to close the public session at this point.
Motion in a second.
I'll second it.
Oh, who's in favor?
We just closed, we, we have to close immediately.